I popped back out because I need to announce we're moving into executive session for the recording.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so this is March 4th, 2021 Oak Ridge City Council meeting. At 6:31, Oak Ridge City Council is moving into executive session. All right, I'm leaving again.
Good.
Here.
Counselor Bjornson. Counselor Whitney.
Here.
Counselor Coker.
Here.
Counselor Hollitt. Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Counselor Spleedoff.
Here.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, okay, we are going to here, I've got all this mess here. Additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda, I believe we have an addition of 10.3 that the council received earlier. And so we'll be adding that under business from the city administrator. Council, do you have any other further additions, corrections, or adjustments? Okay, Brian, do you have any further additions, corrections, or adjustments?
No, I don't.
Uh, Brian, oh, I'm sorry, I moved into past the work session. Brian, how much time do we need for this work session?
Um, it depends on questions, of course, but Grace has a short presentation and probably no more than 20 minutes if we're expeditious.
Okay, okay, let's go ahead and do this, I think council is committed to getting through stuff. Um, if I, if you agree, council, we're just gonna go ahead and proceed as if we're in a work session. We are in a work session and then move into regular, regular after that. So Grace, this is a code assistance program overview. Um, and I don't know who's starting, whether it's Grace or Brian, but go for it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to start, thank you, Mayor. So I'll just say a couple of things before we dive into the presentation, which is that the housing topic has come out of a lot of efforts with the Chamber of Commerce and we've been having some committee meetings to talk about housing over the past couple of months. And this program has come up as one possible resource that we could use to try and address some of those issues. And to meet some of the goals in our strategic plan and transportation system plan. It's not required or mandated by any means, but it could be a really great opportunity for the city to make progress towards those goals. So this program would provide technical assistance through a state agency to come in and evaluate and help us work through our land use code. And help us meet those goals like I mentioned in our plans. And there would be no cost to the city at all, other than some minimal staff time. And it seems like a really great opportunity, like I said, so we can go through the materials that are in the council pocket and then talk about any questions. So Brian, I don't know if you want to scroll through, or if you could make me a co-host, I could share my screen as well.
Uh, you're a co-host, Grace, if you want to do that, it might come out better.
Okay, will do. So does that look okay to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So what is the code assistance program? So like I said, it is a program that's provided by a department that's called Transportation Growth Management. And it's a partnership between DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and the Oregon Department of Transportation. And they're looking at how they can kind of help Oregon communities grow in ways that make sense for their goals and make sense moving into the future. And so they're offering a lot of different opportunities to help small communities reach these goals. So like I said, it would provide direct support to our community to evaluate and update our land use code at no cost to the community. And eligible projects must have a connection to transportation and align with the goals of the program. So if this is something that council is interested in pursuing after this presentation tonight, we'll provide a lot more info about what those goals are and how our projects could align with it. But we just wanted to give an overview today and get the conversation started. But based on our strategic plan and transportation system plan, uh, we believe that we could meet the criteria for the program and be a really good fit for it. Oh, excuse me. So how could it help Oak Ridge? So this is, like I said, an opportunity to get that technical assistance that we don't currently have the capacity for with a limited planning department that would be at no cost to the city. And help us align our land use code with the goals that are outlined in our strategic plan and transportation system plan. And ensure that our codes are meeting state standards and going beyond that to really help us get the type of development and growth that we want moving forward. I think land use plans and other types of plans like that and zoning are good to be updated periodically. And it's been a long time since Oak Ridge has had that update done, so this would be a great opportunity for that kind of regular maintenance to go through and get the technical assistance. If we were to move forward with this, the end product would be that they would provide recommended amendments that we could take exactly as they were written and city council could choose to adopt those if they liked them. And this program could really help us reduce barriers that we're currently facing around increasing the housing supply in our community. Which I know there's a lot of goals in the strategic plan around increasing the quality and quantity of housing. As well as economic development, I know the council has talked about the frontier style design guidelines in our uptown and how that's been a burden for some businesses. So this could also look at that problem as well. Here's an example of some of the goals from the strategic plan that I thought that, oop, excuse me, that this program could specifically address. And there are many more, but this was just a snapshot, I wanted to pull some of the exact language from the plan. Just as a refresher for the community and to show, these are some of the ways that I think our goals fit really well with the goals of the program. And then here's some information about logistics and next steps, if council is interested in this program. They, they accept applications on a rolling basis and it is completely non-competitive, so that reduces the stress on staff's end in terms of putting together an application. And we could do so as quickly as council would like. And there would be no financial burden or match requirement from the city. And like I said, only minimal staffing requirements. It would likely be a couple year-long program, but that would be determined kind of in the phases as we're applying and talking with the program staff to see what would be best for us. So as I said, we're happy to provide more info at the upcoming council meetings. And what council would need to kind of do to support the program and submit an application. So I'll leave it at that to start and we can talk about any questions that came up.
Thank you, Grace, I appreciate it. Um, okay, so Counselor Kenyon, I see a hand, please go ahead.
Um, I have one question for Grace and then one for the, a topic for the council to consider. Related to this, but Grace, would you be working with our planning commission? Um, in the code process, because they have been tasked with that whole topic of the uptown. Already, and so I, I don't know if they've already worked on that or not, but I, I'd like to know if, if we did this, if you would be working with them. Or separately and.
That's a great question, Counselor Kenyon, thank you. Yes, absolutely, planning commission would be involved, and I forgot to mention at the beginning, but this program would involve a lot of community outreach and input opportunities, as well as more opportunities for council to get involved and have input. So one thing that's really appealing about the program is we don't have to know exactly what our goals are. Like what type of designs we'd like to have instead of what we currently have. We just kind of need to know that we want to make some progress and we want to make some changes. And then we could pull them in and have them help us go through that progress and do a lot of engagement and outreach to make sure we're aligned with what the community wants along the way.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Okay, and then the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I have. This part I'd like to ask for the council to consider is, if we do move forward with this, I would really like to add the Hill Street Truck Traffic Code. Something being updated so that we can enforce our signs that say we are not allowed to have truck traffic on that road. Our police has already told us that they can't enforce the sign because the way our codes are written. And I want that to be addressed. Would the council agree with that?
I think it's for a little soon to ask council to agree, let us all get a chance to ask about this, but hold on on to your, on to your question as we get a better understanding of what this is, okay? Counselors.
Oh, okay.
Counselor Spleedoff, go ahead. Counselor Spleedoff, you're on mute. Unmute yourself, please.
Oh.
There you go.
How are you going to get our community involved? Is it going to be a questionnaire, you send out pamphlets, or you sit in one place and, and have a big sign, or how are we gonna do this?
So I don't have all the details of the program yet, since we aren't quite to that phase yet. Um, and I think it will depend a little bit on COVID and what the pandemic rules allow for. But I know that the program folks that would come in and help us with this, they would be hiring consultants who have a lot of experience with that type of work. And I think the goal would be to have listening sessions and workshops and different forms of reaching out to the community. So we can ensure that a lot of different folks are heard and represented, not just one form.
Okay, thank you, so we kind of like have a big workshop in the, the WAC or the school, or somewhere like that, or down at Green Waters where we could have.
Those are all possibilities, and I think Grace made it clear that they hadn't decided how that would be, that we haven't gotten that far. But that community input would absolutely be essential in the process. Counselor Coker.
My comment was to Dawn's comment about the truck traffic on Hill Street. I do, I do know that, you know, maybe possibly they shouldn't be in the residential area, but how else do you plan on getting them to the railroad?
Well, um, another road called Fish Archery Road is the designated truck route, so asking them to actually use it would be my goal.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? If I could just add one more thing, kind of related to that enforcement piece. So this would be looking at updating the code itself and wouldn't act, I, I think we could look at how we could change the code to address that type of issue. But the enforcement would have to come from the city, right? So it's not gonna guarantee that any additional enforcement is happening. But I know we've also talked in these housing groups about things like dilapidated homes or homes that need to be worked on in other ways. So I think it would be a great opportunity to look at all of these different issues and see what can the code do and what are other resources we could pursue to kind of address other things that are related to it.
Right. Any other questions? So just as a, you know, a little bit of an overview, you know, the chamber took on the issue of housing in the community and, and, you know, the lack of housing as well as housing that is dilapidated, is the housing, uh, is the housing market efficient for what we need? What are we missing? And in, in, in trying to educate themselves, they came upon this program. And, um, and the program came out and, and talked to them about it. And that's why they're, they've referred it to council, because they felt that it was a, it was a, a tool for us to use to achieve some of the things that we're, we want to do in the community, that to increase the housing, increase the livability. Make us a better economic fit for entrepreneurs that come in who want housing, big and little sizes. We all know what the housing market is, and this, I was, I was really surprised when I heard this opportunity, and it's free. Totally free, absolutely free, no hooks. For later on that will come in and bite us in the butt, but, um, anyway, so that's what this is now. I don't believe you have to, like Grace said, this is a rolling application, so there's not a deadline that we're working at. But the sooner we get involved in it, um, the better, because it, there's a timeline involved to, to make in this happen. Taking the time to work with the community, bringing forth suggestions that are ultimately ours as council to make. Um, and decide whether that's what we want to do, so.
Mayor, if I might.
Questions? Yes, please go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, from a staff perspective, I welcome the effort, just because it, it provides the ability for experts to come in and take a look at your code and your ordinances and make recommendations, but obviously it's not, uh, not, not required. The council has the ability to pick and choose which changes they want to make to that. But what a wonderful opportunity to improve our ordinances and code.
Okay. Any other questions before we, we move out? Linda, actually, I see that you're online, did you want to say anything since the chamber is the one who initiated this, uh, this housing committee and, and brought this recommendation forward?
Sure, um, thank you, Mayor Holston, and I want to be brief, I think Grace and all of you have covered the main points very well. And from a business perspective, I think the business community would welcome, uh, you know, reviewing the codes and seeing if there's something in there that is an obstacle. And identifying that, so you have staff that who are free, working alongside our own staff, and I just think it's a great opportunity. It also speaks very well to all of the work you put together in the strategic plan. And, um, just to summarize, I think one of the things that I took from Caroline Cummings' talk last session was to build bridges, not gates, and I think that's kind of a, um, an interesting way to look at this as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda, I appreciate that. Um, Dawn, I see your hand, go ahead.
Thank you, um, one last question I had was specifically, is this program gonna look at all of our codes or just codes related to housing?
It's a comprehensive land use evaluation program, so it'd look at all of the codes that are related to land use. And I think we brought the, we brought this kind of idea up around the housing issue, so that would probably be the main focus. But there is flexibility in what council is most excited about, as long as there is that tie to transportation, which with housing, it's really easy to make that connection. Because if people have convenient places to live, it's better for the whole transportation system and the flow of traffic in the community. So there's other issues that I think we can make that connection to as well, but housing is a really clear first step. And as long as we're doing the program, if we do move forward, then there's opportunities to tie in other questions or concerns or areas in the code that council is interested in.
Thank you. Counselor Spleedoff? Go ahead.
You're muted, Audi.
A comment can I from, from Sarah Ultimus, that she.
Yes, I saw it.
Okay.
And she will, she will comment as soon as you're through, but I had to recognize your hand, do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to make sure it was done.
Thank you, Sarah, go ahead, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I'd just like to add as a member of the chamber partners, so I was able to attend this, uh, proposal or the, with DLCD to talk to them about this. And this is a service for small communities of our size that don't have a full-time staff person. So it is a way to, uh, basically access state services that provide those, the staffing to look at housing codes. And, um, one of the questions I had for them is, would they take us all the way through, uh, the process of analyzing code and legal analysis to see if it fits in our code, and they said yes. So it really could get us all the way to the finish line, not just this conceptual thinking about what we need for housing in Oak Ridge, but the actual code that would fit within our existing code. So it really is a great service, so I hope the council considers moving forward on this.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, council, um, if we, let's, I'd like to move on if we're ready. And, um, you know, if you have questions that pop up, um, you know, please reach out to Brian, please reach out to Grace. They're always available by email, if you, as you think about this, you think of some other things. I believe Grace's contact information is on the, on the handout that we, that we gave you. So please take advantage of it. Cool, okay, guys, um, this is now 7:55, we are moving out of our work session and into our regular meeting. I'm going to move directly into public comment, is there anyone at the WAC, Brian? I don't know.
No one that makes to want to make a comment, though.
Okay, alright, um, yeah, right, so those of you that are, um, dialed in, this is the time for public comment, three minutes each. If you would like to make public comment, please unmute yourself, identify yourself. And then I will put you in the queue to, to make comment. If there is, please do so now and speak up, it's okay if you, if you just say your name.
Hey, my name is Sissy Ketchin. On Meadowway, and I wanted to say I agreed with Audi last week. I think that you should charge every time someone uses the disc golf course, something. You can give them free parking or whatever, but Oak Ridge needs to be charging and not giving everything away free.
Thank you, Sissy. Is there anyone else, please, um, state your name? Linda, I see your hand, yes, I see a hand.
Well, it, it's about Zoom, actually. I was able to connect with Counselor Whitney about, um, some free services her department is providing to senior and disabled folks. And I'm really excited that, uh, some of the people who are unable to get on Zoom and participate in some of our community discussions have this opportunity, and maybe Counselor Whitney could say a little more about it. But I've found that some folks my age are feeling very isolated and left out. And they want to participate and they just can't because of the obstacle of using technology and a few other things, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Counselor Whitney, would you want to comment, or would you like to do that during council comments?
Um, I could address it really quick, um.
Okay, go ahead.
So it's, it is a, well, senior disability services received a grant that is through some of the COVID funding. And it's to help provide seniors with a Chromebook and, um, if needed, uh, pay to set up internet for them, just to help with social, social isolation, so that they can stay in contact with family members, loved ones. Um, other things that just help combat that social isolation. So it is a grant, it is limited, um, and we just delivered our first round of Chromebooks here recently. So it's just, it's a nice little program.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney. Okay, let's move on then to Mayor's comments. Um, I will keep them brief, other than to remind people of the vaccination clinic, um, there's a new one, people have been called for this Saturday. The yard waste is also this Saturday, March 20th is the second dose for vaccinations for those who got their first dose already. Uh, March 27th is the second dose for those that are getting those tomorrow. March 30th, we have a budget committee meeting at 6:00 PM, we still have, we still have openings, right, Brian? And we could accept applica, application and vote on it at our next meeting to, if anybody is interested in, in signing up for the budget committee. We had a meeting with, um, actually, maybe I'll, I'll wait to, to do that. Because we have some timed things coming up and some of these can wait. Oh, community garden cleanup is March 13th. I believe that Charlie Nichols and, um, Jason Neemer and the chamber are going to be, um, working at the community garden. Jason, um, can you briefly say what time people can show up and if they need to bring anything? I saw you were just connecting, so you may not even be hearing this.
Um, sorry, Kathy, I just got in.
I thought what you were.
So what, what's the question?
What time would, what, if people would like to participate in the community garden cleanup on March 13th?
Yeah.
What time are they supposed to be?
Um, noon. Yeah, noon, 12 o'clock, yeah.
12 o'clock, and do they need to bring tools?
Um, yeah, it'd probably be a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, because there are, I know, oh, we do, I know Charlie has access to tools in that shed, um, and there's a few there, but, um, it would be good for people to bring tools, yeah. Probably like breaks, um, maybe, uh.
A hole.
Yeah, stuff like that, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Okay, that's all I have to say, I'll make it brief because we have things to get through. Council, do you have any comments or announcements that you would like to share with the community? Counselor Kenyon, I see a hand.
I wanted to ask Jason, which community garden are we referring to, the one down by Salmon Creek Park or the new, new little pumpkin patch that went in, in the uptown area?
Um, it's the Salmon Creek Community Garden.
Right. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Coker, I see a hand.
Thank you, Kathy. So I've had a few unconcerned citizens come to me and ask about what we can do about the RVs and the mess that is there off to the side at Ray's. And also at the backside of Sportsman where there's an RV parked and a lot of times, um, well, I'm way is blocked. Is there anything we can do about that, or how do we go about it?
Thank you for that question, Brian or chief?
I'll defer to chief for now, I'm not really prepared to answer that.
Uh, I know that when it raised, that Officer Miller has cited several people there.
So, so be, talk to us beyond the citing, because we, we hear repeatedly that things get cited that have been said, sitting there. So for example, Counselor Coker mentioned the mobile home that's sitting behind the Sportsman. I know they probably have enough citations to be able to cope the whole thing in citations. What is the next step? What do we do beyond that? Because certainly we can't just let it sit there forever.
Uh, well, we don't really have an abatement procedure for RVs. And it's cost prohibitive for us to tow them, and then a lot of those are gonna be lawyer questions.
Well, I know that we have a, we have a derelict housing code that includes campers. Um, and I would think that that could be extended to that. You know, it seems to me that, that we have gone round and round with this subject for, for several years, how to get rid of things that are sitting there. And it's time to stop letting them sit there, because I'm getting the calls to Counselor Coker regularly. I get calls about what do we do about this? And Counselor Kenyon is indicating she does too, so, um, having it sitting there on Highway 58, having it sitting behind your house is bad enough. But when it's sitting on Highway 58 for everybody to see is it gathers various things that have been stolen from around the community, or whatever it is, is, is ridiculous. So how do we make this change? Does it mean money? Is it, you know, if we have more money, would that do it?
So it's, it's gonna be twofold for us, for liability reasons, gonna be money. I took up these one about $3,500 to tow an RV or trailer. And then, uh, it has to be abated and they won't take it, so then we have to have a place to take it to, and then to do all the abatement for it. And then also, because some of these are people's homes and the laws are ever-changing with that, it's gonna take review from our city attorneys to say what we can and can't do.
As far as being able to abate and tow, because we're, we're displacing someone from a home?
Yes.
Oh. What do you, are you aware of what other communities do about this? Do, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming this is probably an issue throughout all of rural Oregon.
The last chief's meeting before COVID started, we talked about that and everybody was having the same issues that we are.
What do you do, you know, unless you have a pocketbook big enough to just do it? We run into this problem over and over again, so then I guess we can just say that Oak Ridge is just going to turn into a trash pit eventually, because we won't ever be able to do anything about it.
Well, it will, it will take money and our city attorney to say what we can and can't do.
Okay, thank you. I have a question on that. Well, okay, let me, let me go back to Counselor Coker, because I know she said the question. Go ahead, Counselor Coker. Now I've lost it.
No, I'm here.
Okay.
No, Chief pretty much answered it to what I needed to, I do have a second question, but go ahead and go to Chrissy and then come back to me.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Hollitt. Oh, Michelle, you can go first, that's fine.
Okay, so my other concern, and I just wanted to kind of bring it out there to the public and also to council. Um, do any of you know anything of Mr. Doug Bates? It was brought to my attention that about the shooting incident, there was an article posted and that article is false.
Counselor Coker, um, Mr. Bates is actually on our council meeting and I don't believe that is something that is, uh, council business. If you have a, a concern about the veracity of an article that is published, you need to go to that individual, that's not a council concern. Counselor Spleedoff? Councilor Spleedoff?
Uh, another place has been on our list is the burnt-out house with the trailer and all the garbage down here.
They're asking about being able to take care of those. And I think we have, one of them is in process, right? Right, Audi? Isn't one of them in process of being taken care of?
I, the, do, oh, that's what might ask my question to the Chief, because that down there has been there for how many years they burned down?
Which one, Audi?
And they're still living there.
Which one, Audi? The one down on, down by the river?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Brian, do you have anything to say to that?
No, I'm starting to go through them one of, as well as I can. The, the one trailer on commercial, it has, the process has started, and they've gone through their period of time to abate it. And now we're accruing a daily fee on it, or a monthly fee on it, at which point it turns into you take possession and you scrape it, and you sell it, try to recoup your.
So. I had a question.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Um, I actually had a question back on the thing that Councilor Coker brought up with the RV. My question was the one that's in the Ray's parking lot. Typically, at night, there's lights on inside of it, and there's people living in it inside. I think it's inside the Ray's parking lot, or it's that little island. Is it that, okay, it's private, that is private property?
Yeah.
So I've always heard that we have an ordinance on the book, that that's a fine, or whatever. So does that fall under that same thing, that we can just keep fining them forever, but never, we really have no teeth?
Right, unless the private property owner wants to, wants to. I mean, the one behind the Sportsman is on city property in effect, because it is on the side of the road. The one on private property, then we go after the home, the, the property owner because of its derelict housing. But it's the same process. It's putting out repeated citations to get them to do something. You know, as in any other building we have, you know, you know, uptown, the one that's falling down. We can only do so much, but we're, they're going through the process. I will say, and I think we've talked about this at council before, is that, is that city administrator has started the process of working on the one on commercial with the eventual result that, that will be scraped, and we'll be able to sell that, we'll roll that money into the, attacking the next derelict house. So it's a, you know, it's a frustratingly long, involved process. Um, and I know, I know it's one that weighs heavy on council all the time. Councilor Coker, I see a hand.
It's an old one, sorry.
Okay, Councilor Spleedoff, is that an old hand?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right. Let's move on then. Um, let's see, Consent Agenda, 8.1. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Counsel?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
It's Councilor Coker, Councilor Coker, I second.
Councilor Coker has seconded. Please call for a vote. Jackie?
Mayor Holston?
Hi.
Councilor Whitney?
Hi.
Councilor Coker?
Hi.
Councilor Spleedoff?
Hi.
Councilor Hallit?
Hi.
Councilor Kenyon?
Hi.
Councilor Bjornson?
Hi.
That passes, thank you very much, council. Let's move on to the business from the City Council. 9.1, we have an approval of a fishing tackle recycling station here. Um, so this was brought, brought to my attention by Michelle Coker, who is part of Willamette River Keepers. Um, and this is a proposal to put an installation of a recycling station at Green Waters. So Keep Oregon Rivers Clean or Cork is an ODFW. Willamette River Keepers will be cosponsoring a campaign next month, and have asked the city to allow and assist in the installation of a monofilament that's fishing line, recycle station. As for emptying and reporting findings to ODFW, Willamette River Keepers will supply a qualified river guardian volunteer for ongoing maintenance, so they'll be emptying it and taking care of it. They would also add the city's logo onto the sign if we wish. The fiscal impact, because while they produce the, the station, we, we, they would ask Public Works to install it, is about an hour's worth of labor at $23 an hour. Our options are to approve or not approve. Attached to your agenda bill is information about it and a picture as to what it is, and an application form. And may I have a motion?
I move, we approve the installation of a recycling station at Green Waters Park.
Thank you, Councilor Kenyon, do I hear a second?
I'll second, Councilor.
Thank you, Councilor Bjornson, and we are open for discussion. Councilor Kenyon, is that a hand?
Yes, it is, thank you. Um, I wanted to point out, you said that this was something that Michelle Coker brought, and I think you meant to say.
Michelle Emmons, I'm sorry. Did I say Coker? My apologies, Michelle Emmons.
Okay. Um, and then, well, I, I think that's all I had, I lost my train of thought.
Oh, sorry, maybe it'll come back. Anyone else? Okay, if there's no further discussion, Jackie, call for a vote, please.
Councilor Hallit?
Hi.
Councilor Kenyon?
Hi.
Councilor Whitney?
Hi.
Councilor Coker?
Hi.
Councilor Bjornson?
Hi.
Councilor Spleedoff?
Hi.
Mayor Holston?
Hi. Thank you, council, that passes, and we will, we will fill up the application and take the appropriate steps to let them know that it's okay to install. Um, I think that's great. All right, let's move on to business from the city administrator. Um, that's 10.1. Uh, Brian, do you want to introduce this?
Sure do. Uh, so this is the approval of an Oak Ridge Public School Event at Green Waters Park. It's 10.1. I, I include the exhibit of the current COVID activity guidance for reference for the council. Looking for a motion for to approve. Essentially, the middle school wants to conduct a very small cross-country for a very brief period of time at Green Waters Park, March 9th. Thirty runners and a few parents, no reception, given the COVID. And the event will be comply with all the COVID restrictions for counties in the high-risk level where we are at Lane. Um, it reads, and it comes to council, it's come before. Uh, I wanted to just keep consistency here, even though it's a relatively small event, only for probably an hour and a half. It's a cross-country. Uh, your options are to approve the event, not approve the event, and I'm recommending approval and the motions before you.
Thank you, Brian. May I hear a motion? Counsel?
Um, I move, we approve the Oak Ridge Public Schools Athletic Event for March 9th, 2021.
Thank you, Councilor Whitney, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Audi. I appreciate that. Second from Audi Spleedoff. Open for discussion. Councilor Kenyon, is that a hand?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
I was wondering if this involves requesting a fee waiver for, I don't understand why we would approve this, this kind of an event.
Uh, the host.
And they're just using the park, right?
It's at Green Waters. The host of the event says, every previous time they've come and, and gotten approval to run the cross-country meet there. So for consistency, I brought it back. Uh, I didn't consider this a, a fee event.
Yeah, so it's called district. Any other discussion?
All right.
All right, Jackie?
I would.
Uh, go ahead, Councilor.
I would think that beans is for schools, and they're, they're meeting all the COVID compliance. And it's a, a small track meet, that it would be, I don't think we have to, uh, charge them. I, that would be my thought, I, you know.
Correct, correct. That's correct. And, um, okay, Jackie, call for a vote, please.
Councilor Hallit?
Hi.
Councilor Kenyon?
Hi.
Councilor Coker?
Hi.
Mayor Holston?
Hi.
Councilor Bjornson?
Hi.
Councilor Spleedoff?
Hi.
Councilor Whitney?
Hi.
Thank you, council, that passes. Brian will let them know that it's A-OK to move ahead. Um, 10.3, Brian, do you want to introduce this? Oh, wait, did I miss 10.2? Did I miss?
10.2, Oak Ridge Air.
Oh, okay. So you want to do 10.3 before 10.2?
It's up to you, mayor, I can do another one.
That doesn't matter to me. Go ahead with Oak Ridge Air.
Okay, uh, so we want to give you an update on the good things that Oak Ridge Air has been doing. And Grace, in addition to working for the city, also spends half of her time working for Oak Ridge Air. So who better qualified to give you an update on what's going on there? So Grace?
Hi again, council, thanks for giving me so much attention tonight. I'm excited to give you this update about the Oak Ridge Air program. And we prepared some slides and attached the, an FAQ document to your council packet as well. And I'd also like to remind you all that there is a lot more info on our website and Facebook page, and there's also YouTube videos on our YouTube channel at Oak Ridge Air and on our website. So there's lots of places to get more info, and you're also welcome to follow up with us anytime with any additional questions. But I'll run through our presentation to give you a quick update about how the program is doing. So what is Oak Ridge Air for anyone who is new to council or new to the, the community or doesn't know yet? Oak Ridge Air is a wonderful five-year-long program to support air quality improvements in our community, and it's being funded by a 4.9 million grant from the EPA. So that's where all the money is coming from. And the primary focus of the program is going to be to upgrade folks' home heating, so to swap out old wood stoves with new certified stoves, and do weatherization and other home heating upgrades. And we're also handing out free air purifiers to folks for their homes, and creating cleaner air indoor spaces at the schools and public buildings, as well as doing the Community Firewood Program and other aspects. There's some youth education built in, but those are the main parts of the program. Here's a slide that shows the wonderful partners that are involved in this. It's definitely a community-wide effort, and we have a lot of people that are bringing their skills and expertise to the table to get the good work done. So thank you very much to all of our wonderful partners. As I said, these are the main parts of the program. So we have these little icons to kind of help keep track of what's going on. And the main part is that home heating upgrade part, like I said. And we're also happy to be working with the Community Firewood Program and education, air purifiers, and code enforcement. Here's a quick timeline of where we're at right now. So as I said, it's a five-year grant that started last year. With the pandemic, things have been a little slow to start, and we haven't been spreading the word quite as much as we had planned to, because we've been not able to do as many big community events as we would have liked. But we're still really pleased with our progress, and things are moving along as we were hoping for them to. So we're in the pilot program phase for the home heating upgrades, and we have been distributing air purifiers directly to the community. So I'll give you a couple updates about how those parts of the programs are going. And then you can refer back to this timeline if you're curious about kind of what the plan for the rest of the funding will be. So here's a quick snapshot of where we're at with the residential upgrades. So far, we've contacted 40 homes to be included in the pilot. And for your reference, we're starting with homes that are on the City of Oak Ridge Home Heating exempt list. So those are homes that qualify to burn their wood stoves, even when the air quality is bad on a red day, due to either wood being their sole source of heat or due to low income. And we have audited six homes so far, so there's quite a long involved process where we go in and work, we contact folks and work with them, and then their homes get audited to see what upgrades are needed. And then we work with the auditors and the contractors and the homeowners or renters to kind of see what are the best options and what can the program cover. And some new components we've added to that are to install free smoke and CO/CO2 alarms as we're doing those audits, as well as giving air purifiers directly to folks as we're working them through that process. And we're going to continue to connect with the residents and coordinate contractors for bids. Uh, we did want to highlight a couple of things that have been challenging getting this program up and running, which of course is the pandemic, and also establishing trust and credibility in the program. Part of what we're working on right now is getting the message out there more broadly. So we did put information about the program on the city's website, and we're excited to be giving you an update, and hopefully to get a little bit more involvement from council, just to build kind of that trust and good feeling in the community, because this is a direct service to the community, and we're really excited about the program. As I said, we're working with the homes to get them through the pilot stage and working with contractors. And then once we get through this pilot, we'll be able to continue to open the upgrade program up to broader community members with a goal, I think, of servicing around 145 homes throughout the course of the program. And then for the residential air purifiers, here's a couple photos of some direct distribution we've done. I'll also note that we've been working with Orchid Health, and they've done an excellent job distributing air purifiers to patients that are working with the clinic. But we've also distributed an additional 157 air purifiers, or that's total, so far. And we have around 300 more that we'll be distributing throughout the rest of the spring and the summer. Right now, we're doing it kind of a little bit at a time with COVID protocols in place, but we're hoping that we'll be able to do a couple bigger events as the season moves on and things improve. And here's a quick snapshot of the community members who are receiving these air purifiers, just to highlight kind of the information that we're aggregating and gathering around folks who are struggling with different health-related issues that the air purifiers can help with. And these are folks that are most impacted by the poor air quality in the community. And then finally, we just wanted to share kind of some ideas for how council could help us with making this program successful and building that trust in the community. So these are just a couple ideas we had in terms of ways that we would love for you to be more involved if you're interested and have the time. So there's some simple things, like following us on Facebook, or if you're willing to provide a letter of support, we could put on our website or provide some quotes or testimony for the program. Those would all be really helpful. And we're also working on providing some more printed materials that you can all have with you to provide to community members, so everyone has a good idea for what the program is. So thank you all so much. Here's our contact info. And like I said, there's more documents attached to your agenda packet, but I won't go through all of those now. So I'll leave it at that, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Grace, did you mention that there's a link now on the city's website to that?
I did mention that, yes, and I could do, I could do a quick search, that would be helpful.
That's fine. I, I just didn't hear it, I guess, and that's okay. Audi, I see a hand, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I just wondered, does that affect pellet stoves too, or not?
Um, yes, I believe so, and I know that we're looking at pellet stoves as an option for doing upgrades, as long as they're kind of certified, EPA-approved pellet stoves. The main goal is to remove the stoves that are not very efficient and don't burn well in our old in the community, and to upgrade those with newer, cleaner burning options, as well as providing other heat sources, like ductless heat pumps and efficient electric heat, so that folks don't necessarily have to rely on wood stoves. Um, but we will be upgrading wood stoves, so it's not like we're trying to remove them entirely. We just want to make sure that people have the safest and most efficient, cleanest options that they can.
Okay, I, I, I wanted to find out, where do we find this certification on our pellet stove? To make sure, like, when we moved in here, we bought brand-new pellet stove. We did play with their fireplace. And then we've got a heat pump in here too, so we rarely use it. So do you know where I can find that?
Councilor Spleedoff? I, I would ask that you, that you reach out to them at another time other than the council meeting to ask personal questions about your stove. Um, and I'm sure they can help you, because they'll need to know what kind it is, et cetera. Um, so if you wouldn't mind reaching out to them after the council meeting, that would be great. Councilor Kenyon?
Thank you.
I was wondering, Grace, if it's okay to share your Facebook link or website links onto our community chat forum?
Yes.
Which would, it reaches out to a lot of people in the community. I just wouldn't want to misquote anything, though, so, you know, I would probably just say, for more information, please go here.
Yes, absolutely, thank you. We would love that. We have done some posts to the, to the chat forum ourselves, so you might see those here and there, but we try not to post too often. Uh, but you're more than welcome to repost anything we post on our Facebook page or to share your own content. We would love that, thank you.
Excellent.
And can I add here, Grace?
Yeah, go ahead, Sarah.
To Dawn's question, um, and it's my organization, South Willamette Solutions, uh, that, that houses the Rock, the Residential Upgrade Coordinator. So that's now Gwen Patty, and she'll be that contact person on upgrades. Uh, when you do see those Oak Ridge Air posts on Facebook, if you as counselors, or even in your individual capacity, can like those, that helps us break through the Facebook algorithms that basically stop us from getting the word out to a bunch of folks. So we definitely saw this in real time when we were dealing with the fires. We're putting out posts about smoke related to Oak Ridge Air. We got a lot of likes, and then we got a lot of visibility, even up in the thousands. But then as we've had red days, and we haven't had a lot of likes to those posts, we haven't broken through to very many people. So Facebook uses al, uses algorithms to decide who should see our posts or see anybody's posts. So taking the time to like those really do help. So taking the time to like those really do help us get the word out to the community.
Sure. Thank you, Sarah, for sharing that.
And then I have one other quick question. As far as getting an air purifier. Does a citizen have to be a part of one of the local health? Medical offices?
They do not. So we've started, we've started distributing air purifiers directly to residents who are not members with any of the local clinics. So they can look right on our website at Oak Ridge Air. We have a page dedicated to air purifiers. And we do have a link to an online application. We're also working on getting paper copies for folks who are not able to be online. And you're welcome to call us anytime if folks are not online and we can walk you through applications over the phone as well. We are prioritizing residents who have chronic cardiac or respiratory conditions for the air purifiers. But for folks who do experience those health challenges, please call us or find our website and get signed up for that application.
Thank you.
I'll find one, and forward it to the chat.
Counsel Whitney?
Uh, yeah, so the list for the homes that you're reviewing now, they, that came from, if I remember correctly. Our wood heating exemption list, right?
That's correct.
So, so here's a thought that I have, and it's just a thought. It's not, I'm not suggesting one thing or another. But I'm curious as to how many people declined the service that are on the wood, on smoking eating exemption list. One who declined to have anybody come and even look at their home to see what they could do to make it more efficient. Because we're, we're giving people a pass to burn on, on red days and, and, you know, to help. It just increases the pollution. But if they're not willing to. Do things to help improve the air quality in Oak Ridge, should they, they still be on that wood exemption list? The wood heat exemption list, I said. I'm just kind of.
I can take this one, Grace. So Bobby, right now, we have had declines, but they've been valid reasons, such as people already have a certified wood stove in their home. So we're trying to work with those folks for the next steps on whether they would qualify for a ductless heat pump. But if we were to come across that scenario of somebody that would have an uncertified and decline, we would definitely report that to the city, but we haven't seen that yet.
Okay.
Thank you, Counsel Whitney. Okay, thank you, Grace, for that presentation.
Actually, Kathy, if there's no other questions, can we take this moment to introduce Luisa? I saw she popped on and you guys won't get a lot of opportunity interface unless you come to our Oak Ridge Air meetings. And Luisa's here with Good Company. Good Company is the main grant manager for this program on behalf of El Rapa. And so we work closely with them on delivering all these services. So I just wanted to connect a, a name with the program.
Thank you, Sarah. And thank you for what you do. Great. All right, let's move on here to reports of boards, commissions, and committees. Do we have any reports from the admin committee?
Mayor?
Yes.
Ten point.
Oh, ten point three.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Brian, go for it.
Okay, ten point three. It's approval to place advertise and then Eugene Cascades and Coastal Visitor Guide or Coast Visitor Guide. You guys are familiar with this. We partnered with the Chamber last year to do this advertising. But there's been significant changes that they've made to the magazine due to COVID and reduced revenue. So we're looking for a motion from the floor to approve. As I told you, there are some changes. In other words, you're used to that community co-op pages where you had all those little. Boxes with ads in them. That's not going to be the case. They still will have kind of the introductory page for Oak Ridge, description of the community. That you would see on the other side of the page from, from the co-op page. But in addition, if, if the city wants to put together an ad that's more compelling. They're willing to work with us in producing that ad. Well, the, the publication expenses would, they would not charge for it, just the charge to place the ad. So the fiscal impact you saw in the exhibit, depending on what size ad that you would be interested in. And again, we've used TRT funds for this in the past and recommend we continue to do so. So the, you can place it there or choose not to and, and we'll still have a presence in the magazine. It's just a matter that we wouldn't have a kind of a special ad that would, if we wanted to focus on one particular aspect of the city. And, and to try to bring people in. So we recommend you approve it at some level. And the motion's before you.
Thank you, Brian. Do I hear a motion? Not hearing any motion, then it dies. Okay, that dies. Let's move on. Let's move on then to. Eleven point one, Admin Advisory Committee.
We haven't met since the last meeting, so I'll be updating next time.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. Parks and Community Services Committee?
We haven't met since last meeting either.
All right, thank you. Planning Commission, I don't think we have a report from them this time, do we? No?
They held, they just held a hearing and finished off the request for the partition at Highland Ranch and approved it.
Okay, great, great. Public Safety Committee?
We haven't met since we had to change the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any items from twelve through fifteen, no appointments. I will offer public comment again if there is anybody who would like to say anything in addition to what we've heard. Or comment on anything that we have heard so far. Counsel, Counselor, hi, Trudy. Please, go ahead. Unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Trudy Hammond, four seven seven five two Berry Street. And regarding one of the houses in need of cleanup, I am contracting with the owner. And that's the one on Willamette Way behind the sportsman that's, that's farther down the road. So that one is going to be getting cleaned up here very shortly.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you, Trudy.
You're welcome.
That's good news. Anyone else wish to say any public comment before we adjourn? Okay, with that, it is.
Mayor, we have one question at the back here. Let me, let me get it turned around.
I can't hear her.
One sec, Joy. Turn the mic around, too.
Oh, okay. That's Joy Kingsbury.
Oh, that's better.
Four seven seven two six.
Much better.
Drive in Oak Ridge. And I kind of like to back up to the air quality thing. I'm wondering if that will include a fireplace and flu cleaning. Chimney cleaning and chimney caps and that sort of thing, because that's very important too, a part of burning.
Okay. Go ahead, Sarah. I think you can answer that.
Try and take that. So right now, Joy, we don't have the funding for that work. But we are trying to get a list together of contractors who would do that work because we've had those questions several times. And we know there's not someone here in the community that provides those services. But that being said, we do have the opportunity to put in for the same grant, the same EPA Technical Assistance Grant. Again, this go round. So we have a list of kind of second asks that we're considering, and that's something we've been talking about. So we don't have it now, but we're thinking about it for down the road.
Thank you, Sarah.
And.
Thank you, Joy.
For the more adventurous, there is a chimney brush available at the fire department for free if you want to borrow it.
Joy, do not get on the roof. All right, everyone. Well, it is eight thirty-four and this March fourth session of the City Council of Oak Ridge is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.